Want to call this meeting to order. And also the invocation and the pledge of allegiance by our city manager.
Let's go ahead, please. Heavenly Father, we thank you today for all your blessings and for the successful outcomes that we have in our community. We ask for your guidance in our discussions, in aligning our minds in every decision that we make, Lord. Bless our plans, our programs, our projects, so that we can may, and that we can achieve all our objectives, Lord. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Call for a presentation by the Small Business Administration, Mr. Garcia.
I do not see the coordinator here for the Small Business Administration, sir, so he did ask me to place him on the agenda. He wanted to give a report as to the public forum that we had last week, plus also the fact that we already have a recovery disaster center here in Mission.
Okay, well, if he comes back, we can revisit the agenda item.
Yes, sir.
If allowed. Presentation by the Camera de Comercio Internacional, Mr. Garcia.
Yes, sir, we do have members of the Camera de Comercio Internacional. They did have a function here in the city of Mission. It was a first annual. Last year was a great success, and I believe we're coming up to the data again, and they want to do a quickly invitation to the city of Mission.
Good evening, Mayo Caneo, ladies and gentlemen of the commission, citizens of Mission, Texas. My name is Steve Lopez, and I am the Secretary of the Camera de Comercio Internacional, otherwise known as CAMCOIN. It is my honor to speak on behalf of CAMCOIN, and it is my pleasure to bring you this proposal. First, let me begin by describing our organization to those present who do not know who we are. We are 501(c)(6) nonprofit organization made up primarily of immigrant businessmen and women who reside and do business in the city of Mission. Immigrant businesses have unique obstacles such as being proficient in Spanish only, unlearning foreign ways to do business, and having to learn new ways to do business in the U.S., coming to the U.S. without the network of friends or family, being in transition to become a legal U.S. resident, et cetera. These are a few examples of issues that they face, and our organization focuses on them to help them overcome these obstacles. With all the negative attention that our areas receive concerning immigrants, I report to you that we are good news to the city of Mission and to the Valley. We volunteer our time and money on helping these people to achieve the American dream and to become an integral part of this community. Last year, we held a Grito de Independencia, Noche Mexicana, on September the 15th at Bandwidth Park, otherwise known as Parque de los Patos, to the Mexican community. And I'm proud to tell you that more than 1,500 people attended the event. Almost every attendee showed up dressed in authentic clothing of different time periods of areas of Mexico. The citizens were entertained throughout the event by mariachis, folklorico dancers, singers, et cetera. Toward the end, the Mexican consulate performed a ceremonial grito as done throughout Mexico. The event was a complete success, and we thank the city of Mission for helping us plan logistics and for sponsoring the event. This year, we plan on holding our third annual Grito de Independencia on Saturday, September the 15th, at the newly remodeled Leo Peña Park on Conway in Mission. We have a 10 to 20-member-strong committee of volunteers working to make this grito event even bigger. We are planning on 5,000 attendees and making this event much bigger by providing more entertainment and vendors. We'll plan on putting a banner over Conway announcing the event and quadrupling the promotion we did the previous year. It will hope that this event can be Mission's second-biggest event next to the Citrus Festival. The Mexican immigrant and business community has been a big boon to the Rio Grande Valley, and we feel that this event will be a strong attraction not only to them, but to the Hispanic community, and also feels a strong tie to the Mexican culture. The Grito de Independencia is not just an Independence Day like our Fourth of July. In Mexico, the grito is a celebration of freedom from tyranny and a celebration of the Mexican culture itself. We feel that the city of Mission, making a larger investment in this event, Mission will be known as a city that appreciates the benefit immigrant businesses make to this great nation, and the news of this event will also resonate to our neighbors to the south, Mexico. Therefore, on behalf of CAMCOIN, we humbly propose the following to the mayor and the commission. We propose that the city partner with us to plan, market, execute this event, the Grito de Independencia, on an annual basis on September the 15th. And we propose that the city of Mission consider this event the second-biggest event next to the Citrus Festival. Last year, your sponsorship was about a dollar per attendee. We understand that budgets are tight, but during that financial downturn, it's time to look for bargains. We believe this small investment is a great opportunity, and I promise you, next year we will need bigger space to accommodate the growing number of people that will be attending. CAMCOIN has proven itself to be a part of the Mission community by helping businesses to grow and prosper, and by bringing the president of Panama, representatives, ambassadors from other countries such as Mexico, Africa, China, and Spain. Work with us to make this great Mexican tradition one of the biggest in the Rio Grande Valley. And again, I thank you on taking the time to listen to our proposal, and we look forward to working with you for years to come. Basically, we are here to tell you that this year, we invite you, of course, and we want to make this event a big event here in Mission. We think that this is something that's going to attract people from all around the area, and we're looking for you guys to help us and to help us. Last year, like you said, we provided all the police and the firemen and stuff. We're looking for a little bit more of an investment from the city this year.
Obviously, it's a presentation, and it's not an action item, so, but I will allow the council to make their comments, and I'll start with Ms. Garcia.
I just, I, I'm, excuse me, I'm sorry, I might have missed a date that you're going to have it this year?
It's on September the 15th, on, it's a Saturday.
Okay, because the 16th is a Sunday. I was just checking my calendar.
Okay.
All righty, thank you.
Mr. Lopez.
I know last year was very successful. They had, last year, about 1,000 people there. We had some of the schools that participated, Mariachis and all that, even the Frondu TRGV, so it was a great event.
Ms. Uto.
I'm always for great activities, and I'd like for you to get ahold of Ms. Ida Lerma so she can help you with all of that.
Okay.
Spearheading it being our second big event in Mission.
Yes, Ms. Ida's been a big help to us, and we work with her on a daily basis now.
Anything that'll involve families on a minimal budget to have something to do in our city is always a plus.
All right. As she directed to Ms. Lerma, so do I, so she can come up, and if there's an agenda item that needs to be done before September the 15th, you know, for our commitment or, you know, involvement in it, you know, just bring it up as an agenda item. If not, the city manager will be the person in charge of making those kind of commitments.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Chief Sanchez.
Mayor, City Council. I would like to introduce our newly-promoted firefighters of the Mission Fire Department that have met the several sorts of requirements for their respective positions. This past July 19th, last Thursday, we had our official pen ceremony for these firefighters. I'd like to introduce these individuals by their rank and name. Engineer Paul Bendal. Engineer Eric Lopez. Engineer Pilar Garcia. Unfortunately, he had a family emigration that he had attended. Lieutenant Guillermo De La Gaza Jr. Lieutenant Robert Lopez is not present. He is currently at the 89th Texas Municipal School at College Station currently. And Chris Navarrete, Captain Chris Navarrete.
Congratulations. If you all want to come up, so we can take a photo with you, because we're very proud of your commitment to our city, and especially your promotion. Yes.
You're the first one to my watch, man. Very proud of you guys.
Everybody look over here. And then three, two, one. Smile. Nobody move. Do one more. And three, two, one. Okay, we got it.
Yeah, congratulations.
Here's your great chief.
Congratulations, sir.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, guys.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
I'm sure he's very proud of you. Before you all sit down, before you all sit down, I would like to, if legal allows me to, allow you all to address the citizens of Mission and the audience that is here, one by one, please. Next one.
Captain Alfred, I just want to say thank you to chief and to you all, the community, to allow us to continue our development and enrichment in our careers as fire service. We also can be part of it if we want to help out our community, but at the same time, you know, we do look for development and enrichment in our careers, you know, to keep us, you know, striving for more, you know, helping you guys out. Thank you.
Next.
Good evening, I'm Paul Benal, from the 2nd engineer. Just wanted to say it was very hard, and it's allowed us here, it took a lot of our time studying, balancing between family and work. It was a great accomplishment, and we're ready to accomplish, and to serve the mission.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm one of the rest, I come works in the Senate. It was hard, very difficult, but we have a great staff, mentors, chiefs, prior attendants, and entire.
Lieutenant, don't forget your dad.
That's where my father, past chief, so I had the force counsel out the guy, this is my team, I mean, you can help. Want to thank everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. The next item of the agenda is the presentation by Fire Chief Gilbert Sanchez.
Mayor and Council, I'm here before you to present a citizen's life-saving award. I want to bring these individuals up front. I have Pastor Amelia Beasley, intern Sidney Williamson up front, as well as the acting lieutenant of the day who responded to this alarm, Justin McGordia, engineer Justin McGordia. Mayor and Council, the morning of July 10th, 2018, approximately 11:50, a six-year-old child was being dropped off at the La Masias United Methodist Church for a program that the church was being part of, the Project Transformation Rio, Texas. During this timeframe, the child was eating some food before exiting the vehicle. After exiting the vehicle, the child lodged food into the airway and started choking. A church intern was outside by the parking lot and noticed the child in distress and started administering aid to the child. Also, a call to 911 was made by church staff. The child was encouraged to cough, but was unable to dislodge the food. At this point, the intern started performing the humping maneuver as well as back trust as well, but was still unable to clear the airway. The child lost consciousness and went to cardiac arrest. At this point, the intern started CPR. After the second cycle of CPR, the airway was cleared, and this child started breathing once again. Fire and ambulance personnel arrived on location and evaluated the six-year-old child, then transported to the hospital for further evaluation. At this point, I would like to recognize Sidney Williamson for her self-sufficiency act in rendering life-saving aid at a time of need. Also, I would like to present, I'd like to present a certification in recognition of life-sufficiency act in rendering life-saving aid to others at a time of need already on this 23rd day of July 28th, from Chief Sanchez. Here we go. Thank you very much.
Before your speech, we'll come over here and take a picture, and we'll allow you to.
Thank you, appreciate your service.
Thank you for saving lives.
Good to see you.
Thank you for saving lives.
Thank you, words. God bless you all.
Right here, in three, two, one. Three, two, one. And three, two, one. We got it. Thank you.
Before you all sit down, we're going to let you say a few words, however you want to.
Well, I'm very thankful for this award and to be here. I'm thankful for my team that was there, Jimmy, that day, Pastor Moana, and I'm thankful for this child, his life was saved. And most importantly, I'm thankful for my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Without Him, there's no way I could have been able to do that that day. Thank God for everything.
One thing I wanted to note is, you know, we were talking about it as an engine company, and we brought it up to our chief and our superiors, and we always get recognized for the work that we do, and it's just expected of us. But the dedication that she took and the learning of CPR actually saved the life. I think that's the most important part, is that the education itself paid off. Grateful, and so we want to pay it back, and, you know, we believe that this is a worthy award, and we just hopefully that we go from there.
A report from the Greater Mission Chamber of Commerce, Mr. Russell.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. I'll begin with recent events. On Saturday, July 14th, we hosted the Five by Five Brewing Company grand opening and ribbon cutting at their location inside the seed building. For the ribbon cutting portion, we had approximately 275 people in attendance and hundreds more attended throughout the day. On July 17th, we hosted a ribbon cutting for one of our newest members, Maria Grajela Apple Designs. Overall, we had approximately 25 people attend this event. On July 19th, we hosted a groundbreaking with the Habitat for Humanity and HEB for a home that was given to a Mission veteran. Overall, we had 50 people in attendance for this event. On Friday, July 20th, we hosted a ribbon cutting for El Tisoncito USA. Overall, we had 30 people join us for this ribbon cutting at their location. In terms of upcoming events, we were just notified that on Wednesday, this Wednesday, July 25th, DHR Health, also known as Doctors Hospital at Renaissance, will be having a grand opening and ribbon cutting for their Health Transplant Institute, beginning at 10:00 a.m. at the DHR Health Medical Office Building. The address for this event is 1100 East Dove Avenue, Suite 200, McAllen, Texas. On Thursday, July 26th, we will be hosting a ribbon cutting for Azure Financial Group from 10:30 a.m. to 11:30 a.m., with the ceremony scheduled for 11:00 a.m. sharp. The event will take place at their location, which is 1909 West Mile 3, Suite 600, Mission, Texas. On August 7th, from 9:00 a.m. to noon, we will be hosting a workshop titled Listening to Your Business. The workshop will be taught by UTRGV Small Business Development Center, and it'll occur at the chamber. And then lastly, on today's agenda, on August 29th and August 30th, we'll be hosting a nonprofit board member academy workshop. Both days, the workshop will happen at our chamber from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. Any questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes.
City Council.
Next item on the agenda is the departmental reports. Any questions from any of the council members? This is the time to address the departments.
No questions, I move for approval that's presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the departmental reports. I open it for further discussion, in case anybody wants to discuss it. No discussion, is all those in favor say aye? Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Citizen participation. Anybody from the audience that wants to address the citizen, the council, please, you have three minutes, and please identify yourself and your address for the sake of the record, sir. Anybody else wants to address the council or anything that is not on the agenda? We will allow you three minutes, state your name and address.
Good afternoon, Mayor. My name is Brad Benson. I live at 2803 Cardinal Avenue here in Mission. As previous assistant scout master and also current committee member, I'd like to introduce one of our new scouts. His name is Joaquin Rosa.
You say a present?
Yes, sir, he's here back there.
Can he step up to the podium so we can see who he is, and the citizens of Mission on Facebook can see him also?
Okay, as part of the trail to Eagle, they have to do several different mayor badges, I'm sure you know. But anyway, this one that Joaquin is participating in right now is citizenship in the community. I've got it right here, thank you. But anyway, they have to map out the city, whether it's the government offices, parks, recreation areas, fire station, police station, the library, historic areas. But anyway, they're supposed to map it out so they have a good feeling where the city is and what functions within the city. And they also have to get to attend, I say it's have to, but it's more like they get to attend a meeting of their choice, whether they attend a city or a county council, or a school board meeting, or a municipal, or county, or state court session. But anyway, while they're here, they get to meet the people and get to visit with y'all later on. So if you do have time later, I'd like to ask one of y'all to wait, or maybe all y'all can wait, so he can ask y'all maybe questions about what your functions are, and maybe he'll even talk about one of the things that may have been up for discussion, whether this is agenda item that was voted on or disagreed upon, so maybe he can get a better feel of how the government actually works.
Good, I will leave it open to any of the councilperson that wants to do that with it, and if not, I will do it.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
How about a picture? Or do you want to say the words right now? Go ahead and say the words right now. Go ahead. Say your speech.
I don't really got a speech.
Let's take a picture.
I don't have a speech.
Congratulations. Your postcard? Congratulations. I was in 83.
Speaking of louder.
We'll put it on the PA. Okay, here we go. Congratulations. Congratulations, bud. Any other person wants to address the citizen's participation? Please step up. You have three minutes and name and address for the record, please.
My name is Mike Burish. I'm the program director for All Hands and Hearts, a volunteer response organization here in Hidalgo County. Currently, I'm living across the street in Brad's house at the Parks and Rec Building, sleeping on an air mattress. Yesterday marked our one-month anniversary of when we first arrived, and I thought I would come before the city councilman, Mr. Mayor, and kind of give you guys a rundown of where we are and what we've done since we've gotten here. So far, we have assessed over 70 jobs. We have 175 still to be assessed. Out of those numbers, we have 26 of those homes that have been what we call completely cleaned and cleared. Nine homes have been sanitized, including one daycare that had approximately 40 students in that, and we also did two tarping jobs. One number to note here, I think, as far as our numbers, is we've got over 3,300 volunteer hours for a one-month time with just the small team that we have here in Mission in Hidalgo County. I want to say a special thank you to Mayor Caneo, the city council, and to the people of Mission and Hidalgo County for allowing us to come in and help out here. We've grown to really love this place. It's going to be really hard to leave when we do leave, but just everybody opens their hearts, opens their doors, and makes us feel right at home. And we don't always get that everywhere we go, but it's just like we're part of the family here, and everywhere we go, if we have the purple shirts on, people just come up to us in the stores and in the streets and just thank us for what we're doing. And I wanted to take the opportunity to thank everybody in this room, the council, and Mr. Mayor. Thank you for allowing us to be part of your lives here, and hopefully we can continue helping as much as we possibly can while we're here. Thank you so much.
On behalf of the citizens, we want to thank you too.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Council, and public. My name is Maria Estropena Salinas. I have three properties in Mission, and my parents' property, where I'm personally living, is on Miller Avenue. Up our bank, at South Miller, we had nothing but a dump there, a dump. They threw colchones, they threw everything you can imagine. My good friend, Mr. Garcia, came into town and said, hey, we need to take care of this issue, so we started collaborating, and I think everybody knows me here as an activist, and I'm coming in with a recommendation. We wanted outdoor leisure time recreational area, we wanted play, and we wanted a beautiful park. We need to get the children out, and we need to get people participating in physical activity. Now, there was a park created, and the park was named for a dear friend of mine, and he was such a dear friend of my dad's, man, the man was a wonderful person. However, the park was named for him, and he would have told me in the many discussions, mija, no papa tanto, yo ni se tanto, to deserve that. I know, because we spent many hours talking baseball. We wanted a place that was stimulating to play, we wanted... need to address that. I would really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else wants to address the citizens, under citizens' participation, this council? Anybody else on an item that is not on the agenda? Anybody else wants to address the councils on an item not on the agenda? Okay, thank you. We will move over to public hearing 1.0. We're, I'm calling for 1.1A, planning and zoning recommendations of rezoning lot 7, 8, 9, and the east 8 of lot 10. Mr. Azavell?
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1A is a public hearing for rezoning of lots 7, 8, 9, and the east 8 feet of lot 10 of block E, right addition subdivision. The property is currently zoned R2, and the request is to rezone it to R3 multifamily residential. The applicant is José Alberto Vela, and if the council is inclined to approve this rezoning request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On July 11, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this rezoning request. The subject site is located near the East 12th Street and Sights intersection. The surrounding zones include duplex, fourplex, which is the dark green color, to all directions. There is some R3 multifamily apartments, which is the darker shaded colors, within the immediate zone. The applicant is proposing to construct a total of 12 apartments, but the reason that I suggested that he rezonate to R3 is because on, under the R2 zoning, you're only allowed to construct four apartments on any given lot. And the proposal that was brought up to me by the applicant was to do six apartments on lot number nine and six apartments on lot number seven. On lot number eight, which is the middle lot, he wanted to do a parking area. So being that the R2 code doesn't allow for more than four apartments, I told him to rezone to R3. As far as the density, it's going to remain 12 units, which is what would be allowed in an R2 zone. So staff did not object to the proposal. There was no opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval, as is our city manager. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1A is now before you.
Thank you, Mr. Azavell. This is a public hearing, so anybody from the audience that would like to speak in favor or against this item, please come forward, identify yourselves for the record, and state your case.
Maria Estropena Salinas. Again, approximately 20 years ago, we started an item that we were addressing the council and a past mayor, to be cautious with all the apartments. And we researched and submitted hundreds of signatures, why we felt it was going to be a hazard for the community. However, many are very, very nice, and my recommendation would be that when you have apartments, as one of the items we're dealing with right now also in our neighborhood, if there's six apartments, they put, eight apartments, there's eight big trash bins, and then you have all the residents and everybody, we have 12 to 14 trash bins in our neighborhood. If you would see the mess. So my recommendation is, anytime you have four to eight or more apartments, please start having the BFI, because they start throwing trash all over the neighbors. Oh my God, and I'm continuously having to address a problem with city managers and, you know, members of the boards. When you do have your apartment complexes, and because there's going to be more trash, and everybody's going to buy a big TV and barbecue pit, whatever, please forget the small bins and start going with the BFI's. It will be better for the community. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. This is a public hearing. Anybody else wants to, in favor or against the item? The item? Anybody else? This is a public hearing, in favor or against the zoning item? This, at this time, I close the public hearing, and I will ask the council for their comments and a motion. We need to adopt an ordinance 4655? Correction, 4655. No, stand corrected.
Yes, sir. I move for approval.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion by any of the city council persons? No further discussion, I call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 1.1B, conditional use permit.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Item 1.1B is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for a drive-through convenience store at 1929 North Conway. This is all of lot 2D, being a re-subdivision of all of lot 2, re-subdivision of lot 1 of the Mission Center subdivision. The property is zoned C3, general commercial, and the applicant is Argento Properties LTD. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On July 11, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The subject site is located at the 20th Street and Conway intersection. The owner of the laundromat has purchased the abutting property to the north, and what he would like to do is a drive-through convenience store. As well as in between properties, he's going to be installing a landscaped area fenced in with a playground possibly for the, for the children that may be with their parents at the laundromat. The proposed hours of operation are every day from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m. A total of three employees will man the operation. With regards to parking, it is noted that 25 parking spaces are held in common at this commercial development. And the next exhibit will show you a rendering of what is being proposed. The current laundromat is going to be remodeled, it's going to be a stucco finish, as is the proposed commercial drive-through business. And landscaping that's being proposed is exceeding the city code. There was no opposition during the meeting. I did receive one call from one resident that was concerned about maybe the sale of alcohol happening from this drive-through. And as far as that happening, that matter was addressed at the meeting, and the applicant will not be selling any alcohol from this drive-through convenience store. Being said, that there will be no alcohol sales, the person that was at the meeting was okay with the proposal as being presented. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff and our city manager are also recommending approval for one year to assess the new operation. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1B is now before you.
Thank you, Mr. Azavell. I open it for the public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this conditional use permit? Please come to the podium and state your side and your reasons or feedback. This is a public hearing. This is a public hearing. I am closing the public hearing and open it for discussion for any of the council members to add their comments.
Yes, Mayor, if I could make a comment.
Go ahead.
I'm kind of concerned with it being until midnight, because we do have a couple of snow hut stands that have been brought to our attention, and I just want to make sure that we're fair and consistent with when we're doing items like this, because even though they may not be selling alcohol, possibly when people go buy their goodie snacks and all that stuff, if we have some other businesses that we have closing at 10:00, it wouldn't be fair, in my eyes, for this establishment to be open until midnight, when they're probably going to be selling kind of the same things. And so I think that it's right off of Conway. Safety's a big issue for me. When you mentioned park there, I mean, are the parents going to be there while the kids are playing, while they're attending to their laundry? All those are concerning. I did have residents from the neighborhood call me, because they saw the facade just being there, and they were afraid that it was going to be something like that. But I think you addressed some of their concerns through the woman that called you. I don't know, I just, did they tell you what they're going to be selling out of there? I mean, it's a drive-through, so any kind of, are they going to go to those specialty snacks also, like the, kind of like what the snow hut stand is doing? I think I just want to, I would prefer to be as fair as other.
It is going to be a combination of snacks and groceries. One of the things that he wants to sell is laundry soap and softeners, because a lot of his clients are having to cross Conway to go to the HEB to purchase those items. So he feels that it's safer if he provides those products at his store, rather than having people cross Conway. There is no immediate residential, I guess, resident living abutting to this property. There is some residential units north of 20th Street, and we did get some of those concerns. Some of the concerns were that people might be buying alcohol, drinking it at the car wash, but since the doctor who owns the facility is not going to be providing alcohol, some of the residents were at ease with the, with the request. Traffic will be coming in off of 20th Street, and they'll be exiting back onto 20th Street. So there's not going to be any shining of lights to the nearest residents. I don't know if that helps. But if the council desires to reduce the hours...
I know, Jaime, that there's other drive-throughs on Conway. What time are they open till?
There's other drive-throughs. There's one at the corner of 13th and Conway, next to the Aloha Car Wash, and that one is open till, till midnight.
Then the snow cone stands are the ones that are closing at 10:00 or what?
The snow cone stands are closing at 10:00, and there's one that's closing at 10:30. And all the other ones, Squink Lays, and all the other ones along Business Highway 83, they all close at 10:00.
Any other comments, Ms. Garcia?
No.
In this, I open it for a motion for adopting, adopting ordinance 4656.
I move for approval as presented.
Second.
Motion to approve ordinance 4656 and a second. In this, I open it for further discussion. There is no amendments to the ordinance, am I correct?
Right.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. I call for a public hearing for 1.1C, conditional use permit, sale and onsite consumption of alcohol.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Item 1.1C is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for the sale and onsite consumption of alcoholic beverages. This is at Ranch House Burgers #2. The address is 409 North Bryan Road, Bean Suites 104 and 105 of Lot 1, City Plaza subdivision. The property is zoned C3, and the Ranch House Burgers #2, in care of Christine Alanis, is the applicant. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On July 11, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The subject site is located within a commercial plaza at the northwest corner of Matamoros and Bryan. The applicant has operated at this location since 2015, and the council most recently approved their conditional use permit back on January of 2017. There have been no PD reports from this particular location. And the hours of operation on Monday through Wednesday from 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., Thursday and Friday from 11:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m., and Sunday from 12:00 to 4:00. A total of 15 employees man this operation, and parking is held in common, and landscaping is existing in this meeting code. There was no public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval for a period of two years, at which time the applicant will have to renew their TABC license and conditional use permit. Our city manager is also recommending approval. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1C is now before you.
Thank you, Mr. Azavell. This is a public hearing. Anybody from the audience would like to talk on behalf or against conditional use permit? This is a public hearing. Anybody wants to approach in favor or against the conditional use permit? This is a public hearing. Anybody wants to approach in favor or against the conditional use permit? This is a public hearing. I am closing the public hearing and opening for further discussion from any of the city council.
I move for approval, Mayor.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 4657, and I'll open it for further discussion. Go ahead, Ms. Garcia.
The, the TABC license, are those given, are those issued every two years?
Every two years, correct.
Okay. So we wouldn't be able to give them more than two years on their conditional use permit?
We used to do that in the past, where we used to give them a life of use, but I think the practice has switched over to keeping them in line with the TABC license.
Could we possibly go to four years and keep the expiration date on their next anniversary? Because they've been in business for, you know, they've been in business for three years already and...
No problems.
And they've hadn't had any problems, and I just...
This is not a renewal, though, ma'am. This is a new ownership. Is that correct?
Actually, this is, Mr. Garcia's correct. This is not a renewal, this is a new owner. The previous application came in under Stephen Alanis.
Okay.
Stephen Alanis was a co-owner with Christine Alanis. Christine Alanis has assumed sole responsibility of the...
Then it's kind of the same owner.
Yeah.
It's kind of the same owner, yes. I would, I would be inclined to give them a four-year conditional use permit. That's just my thought.
Any other comments?
I'll retract my motion.
Okay, do I retract the second?
Yes, sir.
We retract the second, and Ms. Garcia, you want to make the motion with your consideration?
Jessica amend her motion.
Okay, Jessica, you want to make the motion with Ms. Garcia's consideration?
I guess I'll amend my motion to give them a four-year permit so they can sell.
Do I hear a motion?
Second.
I make a motion, uh-huh.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Yes, sir.
Okay. For adopting ordinance 4657, and this, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries with the adjustment of from two years to four years.
Very good.
I will open the public hearing for 1.1D, conditional use permit renewal. Mr. Azavell?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Council. Item 1.1D is a public hearing for a conditional use permit renewal for the sale and onsite consumption of alcoholic beverages at Yokosushi Restaurant. The restaurant is at 122 South Sherry Road, Suite K. This is at the Home Depot subdivision number two. The property is zoned C4 heavy commercial, and the applicant again is Yokosushi Restaurant, LLC. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On July 11, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The subject site is located approximately 1,200 feet north of Expressway 83, along the west side of Sherry Road. This CUP was first approved by the P&amp;Z on October 14 of 2009, and most recently renewed on June 8, 2015. The hours of operation are Sunday through Wednesday from 11:00 a.m. to 10:30 p.m., and Thursday through Saturday from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. All parking, landscaping, and sign codes are being met. There have been no negative incidents related to this CUP since its last approval. There was no public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval of this CUP for a period of, of now until November the 24th of 2019, at which their TABC license will expire, and they will be having to renew both the TABC license and CUP. Our city manager is also recommending approval. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1D is now before you.
This is a public hearing. use permit renewal for the sale and onsite consumption of alcoholic beverages at Yoko Sushi Restaurant. The restaurant is at 122 South Cherry Road, Suite K. This is at the Home Depot Subdivision Number Two. The property is owned C4 Heavy Commercial, and the applicant again is Yoko Sushi Restaurant LLC. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On July 11, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The subject site is located approximately 1,200 feet north of Expressway 83 along the west side of Cherry Road. This CUP was first approved by the P&amp;Z on October 14th of 2009 and most recently renewed on June 8th, 2015. The hours of operation are Sunday through Wednesday from 11:00 a.m. to 10:30 p.m., and Thursday through Saturday from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. All parking, landscaping, and sign codes are being met. There have been no negative incidents related to this CUP since its last approval. There was no public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval of this CUP for a period of now until November the 24th of 2019, at which their TABC license will expire, and they will be having to renew both the TABC license and CUP. Our city manager is also recommending approval. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1D is now before you.
This is a public hearing. I will open it for the public in favor or against the conditional use permit renewal. This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this conditional use permit renewal? This is a public hearing. I will close the public hearing and open it for discussion by any of the council members.
I would like to see the same thing applied to this application. They've been in business since 2009, so that we're in the... On target with a TABC license, I think that we would be... Or I would like to approve this conditional use permit to November of 2021.
Okay. Are you putting in a formal motion?
That is my motion.
Second. We have a motion. We have a second, and in this, I open for further discussion. Any of the city council persons want to further discuss this issue? No discussions. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes with the adjustment to November 24, 2021. Mr. Azarell, so. I move to agenda item number 2.0, disposition of minutes at 2.1, city council meeting for July the 9th, 2018. Any questions, or do I hear a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
We have a motion to approve, and a second. In this, I open it for further discussion. Any discussions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 3.0, acknowledgement receipt of the minutes of Planning and Zoning Commission, June 27, 2018, Mission Historical Museum, May 21, 2018, and Cherry Golf Course Advisory Board, April 10, 2018. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Mayor, I move to approve the knowledge receipt of minutes.
Your motion has been recognized, and do I hear a second? We have a motion and a second. In this, I open it for further discussion. No further discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Approval and authorization, 4.1, preliminary plat approval. Mr. Azarell?
Thank you, Mayor Council. 4.1 is a preliminary plat approval of Stewart Cove Subdivision. This is a 6.01 acres out of Lot 26-12 West Edition of Cherry Land Subdivision. The property is owned R1A Large Lot Single Family, and the developer is Aaron Bahi. Inohosa Engineering is the engineer for the project. The property is located a quarter mile north of Griffin Parkway along the west side of Stewart Road. What's being proposed is 18 large lot, single family lots. Each lot averages a minimum of 10,800 square feet. Water and sewer are both provided by the city. There's water and sewer lines within the area. As far as drainage, drainage will be accomplished by upsizing the drainage lines to 36 inches. The increased detention volume... This will increase detention volume from 8,716 cubic feet to 11,449 cubic feet. Planning and zoning is recommending approval, as is staff. Our city manager is also recommending approval, subject to meeting the model subdivision rules, complying with the street alignment policy, and paying of the capital store recovery and park fees. Item 4.1 is now before you.
This is a preliminary plat approval. Do I hear a motion?
I move for approval, this presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I open it for further discussion. No discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those against, same sign. Motion carries, and I want to publicly recognize Mr. Bahi. Thank you for going from 24 inch to 36 inch in the drainage system. You know, that is our goal that we're working on, on working that area, and thank you for stepping up to the plate on that, sir, Mr. Bahi. I just want to publicly commend you for that. Thank you. 4.2, preliminary plat approval.
Thank you, Mayor Council. 4.2 is a preliminary plat approval of Mayberry Court Subdivision. This is a five-acre tract out of Lot 27-8 West Edition of Cherry Land Subdivision. Property is owned R1, and the developer again is Aaron Bahi. Inohosa Engineering is the engineer. The subject site is located half a mile south of East Two Mile Road along the west side of Mayberry Road. What we have here, Mayor Council, is 17 single-family lots, all exceeding the minimum 6,600 square foot requirement. Water and sewer are provided by the city. There's access to both the water and sewer lines along Mayberry Road. With regards to drainage, the developer and the engineer are proposing a series of 24-inch lines, and the developer will also be widening the drain ditch that's abutting the property to the north as part of their drainage plan. P&amp;Z is recommending approval, as is staff. Staff and our city manager recommend approval, subject to meeting the model subdivision rules, complying with the street alignment policy, and the payment of the capital sewer and park fees. Item 4.2 is now before you.
Do I hear any motion?
For approval.
We have a motion to approve preliminary plat approval?
Second.
And we have a second. I open it for further discussion. No discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 4.3, Mr. Azarell?
Thank you, Mayor Council. Item 4.3 is a report with the City of Mission's agreement with Hunt Valley Development on the annual transferring of water rights. The City of Mission has a longstanding agreement with Hunt Valley Development to annually transfer any water rights of recorded plats within their development during the period of July 1st, 2017 up to June 30th, 2018, Hunt recorded one plat, which equated to a dedication of 13.20 municipal acres feet of water rights. Initially, we had included a sample of the agreement that was included on the packet, but earlier today I did get an email from Paul Curtin in which he corrected the previous agreement because he had failed to include some common areas in the acreage. So what Virgil handed out is the latest agreement that will be signed by Mr. Garcia and myself. Staff and city manager are recommending approval. Item 4.3 is now before you.
I move for approval.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the report on the transferring of water rights from the Hunts. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Legal, I just wanted to ask, does this agreement need to come to the council, or it's already approved, or?
The agreement is already approved, Mayor. This is just like a report on what has been transferred over the course of the year.
Okay. I would like to know the total number of water rights that the city, so I can... The city?
The city as a whole.
So I can compare it to the 2005 municipal plan that we have.
The report that was included outlines what was dedicated at the Cherry Land Plantation area by years.
Right, but I'm talking about for the total city.
You want a total city?
Yeah, so I can compare it to 2005, so we can be able to make a long-range plan.
Okay, sounds good.
On water rights also.
We'll get you that, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. 4.4, authorization to execute second one-year renewal option. Mr. Azarell?
Thank you, Mayor Council. 4.4 is authorization to execute the second one-year renewal option of Condes Landscaping and OCL Enterprises Weedy Lot Abatement Agreement. In 2016, the City of Mission extended, entered into contractual agreement with Condes Landscaping and OCL Enterprises for the Weedy Lot Abatement. The terms of the contract were for one year with two one-year renewal options. This is the second term of this contract. If approved, this will be the second and final renewal option. And to the contract, no rate increases are being proposed for this upcoming year. Staff and our city manager are recommending approval. Item 4.4 is now before you.
Any questions, Lauren?
I have a question, Mayor.
What?
How much does... Do we... Has Condes Landscaping built for the past year?
We share the services between both of the landscapers, and we usually budget about $75,000 for those services. We never use the full amount, however. In the past, it's been, I want to say, about $30,000 or $40,000.
Any other questions?
But you budget 75?
We budget 75, because you just never know depending on the needs.
Especially now.
Depends on how much it rains.
Depending on the rainfall we get, yes.
Any other questions? Do I hear a motion to authorize the execution?
I move to approve.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to execute the authorization to execute second one-year renewal option with the Conde Landscaping and OCL Enterprises for the Weedy Lot Abatement. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 4.5, Mr. Rio?
Yes, Mayor Council. Item 4.5 would be the approval of ordinance 4659, and this is granting a wet designation for 801 North Bryan Road, Suite 174, Lot One. This is for the sale and onsite consumption. This is the Five by Five Brewery Company, and staff and city manager recommend approval.
Move for approval.
We have a motion. We have a second. In this, I open it for further discussion by any of the city council person. No discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Rio. 4.6, authorization to apply for a grant. Mr. Benson?
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. I have before you item 4.6, which is the authorization to apply for grant for outdoor exercise equipment for Birdwill Park. This is an all-inclusive outdoor exercise equipment, including six pieces, three of which would be wheelchair-accessible. This is through Greenfield Outdoor Equipment for Birdwill Park in conjunction with the development of Mission Tennis Center. As per a grant application with Texas Parks and Wildlife, we need to install these equipment. The estimated cost of the equipment is $40,000. Staff and city manager recommend this grant of application.
I move for approval.
We have a motion and a second to authorize for the application of a grant for outdoor exercise. Any other discussion by any of the council? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
4.7, Mr. Sidler, change order for repainting and increasing the size of the letters.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. Item 4.7 is a change order number one to repaint and increase the size of the letters on the logo of the newly constructed elevated water tower located off Cherry Road near Mission Events Center. Change order number one is in an amount of not to exceed $55,800, and it's needed to repaint and increase the size of the letters on the logo. The total contract price for the project was $1,994,000. The total adjusted contract price with this approved change order would be $2,49,800. Melvin and Hunt Incorporated is the project designer, and Landmark Construction is his contractor. The Mission Redevelopment Authority, number one board of directors, approved this change order at their board meeting on June 28, 2018. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Do I hear any comments? We have a motion to approve. Any second?
I have a question.
I need a second first.
Second.
We have a second, and so I can open it for discussion. Now I can open it for discussion. Ms. Soto?
I just would like to know, had they done the scope of work like this, why the increase the letters? Was that not in the original?
So what had happened was the design was designed based on the North Cherry Road water tower.
Okay.
But once it went up, we're trying to go after, kind of as a marketing for the event center, trying to go after visibility off the expressway. So given a longer distance of visibility, it looks smaller, and the blue color kind of blends into the sky. So that's the difference.
Okay.
Okay.
You got the same question?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 4.8, change order number two?
Yes, sir. 4.8 is change order number two related to Anzaldo's Highway Wastewater and Water Trunk Line Phase Two project to install a 24-inch steel casing and bore for gravity sewer on military highway. Dry bore is due to soil conditions and textile requirements. This change order is in the amount of $30,000. Previous contract price was $3,784,448.05. The new contract price, including this change order, would be $3,814,448.05. Contractor is Morville LLC, half associate as the designer. The Mission Redevelopment Authority, number one board of directors, approved this change order number two at the board meeting on June 28, 2018, and staff and city manager recommend approval.
I move for approval.
We have a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second to approve the change order number two. In this, I open it for further discussion. No discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. 4.9, requesting authorization for the City of Mission to enter into MOU with Texas. Chief Sanchez?
Yes, item 4.9. The purpose, to delegate in the responsibilities and procedures for the urban search and rescue activities under the authority of the State of Texas Emergency Management Plan. These activities will be in conjunction with in preparation for a state or federal declaration of disaster and training activities. Funding will be reimbursed by the state upon activation and deployment. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the request by Chief Sanchez. Anybody, any of the council have any questions, anything? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 4.10, Chief Mingus, representative. Approval of resolution number 1564. Go ahead, sir.
Good afternoon, Council. Mayor, Mr. Roxton. Item 4.10 is approval for resolution authorizing the municipal police department to submit an agreement for the temporary closure of the state right of way to the Texas Department of Transportation for the 2018 Darling's Dairy Cycling Ride. The bike ride will commence at FM 494 and end at Benson Palm Drive. The event is scheduled for August 4th from 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Move for approval.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution number 1564. Any other discussion? No discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 4.11, sir?
Item 4.11 is authorization to solicit bids for security guard services for the City of Mission. The City of Mission Police Department is tasked with acquiring security guard services for different City of Mission events. As services and events provided by the different city departments toward city grows, the need for security guard services also grows. The department is in coordination where the purchasing department is disseminating the specifications for security guards. Staff and city manager recommend solicit for bids.
Remove for approval.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any other discussion by any of the council persons? Not. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. 4.12, authorization to purchase software upgrades. Mr. Mead or Mr. Mead's representative?
Yes, I'll be stepping in for Mr. Mead, Mayor, City Council. Item 4.12 is authorization to purchase software upgrades from Sequel Data Systems Incorporated for Mission Economic Development Corporation, SEED Building, located at 801 North Bryan Mission. AVSphere and VDI upgrade, which includes firmware and software upgrades and configuration of the virtual environment infrastructure, including the disk server, virtual desktop environment. Documentation and training is needed at SEED. The total amount for this upgrade is $9,614, as well as an Aruba Airwave and switch configuration that includes installation and configuration of the Aruba Airwave monitoring server for wireless access points and network hardware. Configuration of the network switch and the extension of service into the maker space. Documentation and training. Total amount for this upgrade is $6,992. Sequel Data Systems Incorporated DIR contract number is DIRTSO3359. Total request is in the amount of $16,606. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to authorize the purchase of a software upgrade. Any further discussions? No discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. 4.13, approval of final five-year consolidated plan and strategy for 2018-2022 annual action plan?
Yes. Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. Item 4.13 is approval of final five-year consolidated plan and strategy 2018-2022 and annual action plan 2018-19, and authorize city manager to execute sub-receiving agreements, receiving fiscal year 18 CDBG allocations. The consolidated plan and strategy establishes the goals and objectives for use of CDBG funds by identifying the needs and priorities of the city. The annual action plan describes activities that will be undertaken with the CDBG funds to meet the goals and objectives set in the consolidated plan. As required by HUD, public hearings were held to solicit input on the five-year consolidated plan and strategy and the annual action plan. Although no comments were received, CEC members identified the need for drainage improvements, flood management, and cultural arts and theater activities and events for all ages. The comment period ended... The common period ended on July 6, 2018. The 2018 CDBG allocation is $960,474, and the recommended funding for are for Silver Ribbon, $6,000, East Two Hills, $4,000, Children's Advocacy Center, $9,000, Casa Fidal County, $2,000, Housing Assistance Program, $675,000, Housing Administration, $83,000, Program Administration, $148,474. Upon approval, this document will be submitted to HUD on or about August 15, 2018. Staff and City Manager recommend approval.
Do I hear a motion to approve? We have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. This is open for further discussion from any of the city councils?
Ms. Longoria, I was just curious. Your board members, they wanted drainage improvements and different cultural activities. What were their suggestions? And was it something that could have been incorporated in this funding?
Basically, on the drainage improvements, they just wanted more preparation from the city, you know, to avoid all of the drainage, I mean, the flooding within the areas, spot areas. As far as the cultural arts and theater activities and events for all ages, they wanted to see more activities for, basically, theater, you know, try to involve more activities for the arts. So what I had planned to do is I'm going to go ahead and get together with the library and the museum to see if we can coordinate some type of activities in the near future. These type of activities are not within the budget for this fiscal year, as the party has always been for housing. So it didn't allow for those type of activities.
Okay, maybe you can get together at your next meeting and invite our City Manager to go and listen to their concerns. And then, Mayor, possibly in the future, we can create some type of board, an advisory board, for just what her board members were. Obviously, we have a lot of our community members that are interested in doing more for our community, and so maybe that can be an idea.
Yes, and let me know when your next board meeting is going to be.
Sure.
Do I have, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 4.14, approval of the final five-year consolidated plan and strategy. Go ahead.
This is the same item as I previously presented. The only difference is that the funding is set for Amigos del Valle at $26,000, which is $4,000 for activities and $22,000 for meals, and funding for area agency and aidling of $7,000. Staff and City Manager recommend approval.
More to approve.
We have a motion, second?
Second.
Second.
In this one, I don't believe Ms. Garcia can vote because she's part of the Amigos del Valle.
Ms. Garcia is abstaining.
Yes, but I can, I can be part of the discussion, right? Can I be part of the discussion?
Well, I hope you would give them.
Can she be part of the discussion based on the practices?
If a council member is abstaining, then they cannot participate in the discussion.
Oh, man.
Ms. Longoria, you can probably answer what probably Ms. Norrie was going to say. In other cities or municipalities, are we comparable to what they give their citizens?
For these two agencies?
Or? We're giving $26,000, right, for the Amigos del Valle?
Yes.
Now, what about the City of Edinburgh, the City of Farr, because they're about our size?
They're about the same. The only difference here is that we fund activities, and I've seen other cities that do not. They just fund the home-delivered meals program. That's what I've seen.
And how many community members do you give? Do they, is it healthy meals and they like, obviously, a hot meal?
Yes, we have, in the past, some of my members have attended, you know, they go to the senior center here at the Naldo Ramirez Center, and we do just a visit there, and they're pleased with the services that they provide. And it's been very, you know, pretty good.
And this is open for a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, again, same sign and want to abstain.
Want to abstain, too.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia. 4.15, authorization to solicit bids for Housing Assistance Program Phase 17-Roman Numero Two?
Yes, this item is for a request for reconstruction of three homes located at 4004 Lopez, 123 Quebec Street, 805 North Canal, and rehabilitation of two homes located at 970 Truman Avenue and 807 Nuesa Street. CAC approved on this recommendation on July 2, 2018. Staff and City Manager recommend approval.
Move for approval, Mayor.
Move for approval and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Mayor, I just had a question. I've always been curious.
Go ahead.
Is there any way, and legal can answer this, that we could have the names of the homeowners on here so we can know their names? Because we only know when we're going to go and give them the keys to the house.
It's not a normal practice to provide the names because of confidentiality, but I guess I could provide it, you know, just for those purposes.
I have a legal opinion on it.
I would need to look into that issue, Councilwoman Ochoa, but I don't see any problem with an in-camera inspection by each council member as to who the homes belong to.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. 4.16, award contract for EAP services, Ms. Mungia.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item 4.16 is to award contract for EAP services. Bids were solicited for the employee assistance program. We accepted an open one-bid response. DROK's EAP proposal was determined to be advantageous to the city, and Staff and City Manager recommend approval to award contract to DROK's EAP services.
More to approve.
We have a motion to approve, do I hear a second?
Second.
No, we have a second. This is open for further discussion by any of the council persons. No discussion?
Only one bidder, right?
One bidder.
I just hope that in the future, Ms. Mungia, we see more of our employees know about EAP services. It's a shame that only one person bid it out. I hope that we did our due diligence to have other agencies be aware for any future assistance to our employees.
Yes, we did that through the purchase in the department. We solicited to more than one agency, but this is the only proposal that we received. Yeah.
And who was before?
Last year, the last time we did this, I think we received three responses. This year, we received one.
Were they, were they the same ones before?
Yes, we have been with DROK's EAP since 2007.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Unless you have something to add, sir?
We just wanted, I just wanted to add that we do go through the state website, and on there, all the vendors are registered, and we also have our own internal database where we invite our vendors to register with us so we, so they can participate in the bidding process. And we did send out multiple email invitations to submit for proposals.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
4.17, approval for Resolution Number?
1565.
1565. Establishing a commitment to participate. Terraza?
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. I come before you to present item 4.17, approval of Resolution Number 1565, establishing a commitment to participate in the Texas Department of Transportation construction project known as Taylor Road from Business 83 to Mall 2 North, and authorizing the mayor to execute local transportation project advanced funding agreement. Mr. Mayor, we have Mr. Bay Badilla Samani with LNG to give us a presentation on this project.
Good afternoon, Mayor, and Councilmembers. My name is Bay Badilla Samani with LNG Engineering. I'll be very brief, just wanted to give you an overall picture of the Taylor Road. Taylor Road corridor expansion to a four-lane facility, a four-lane carbon gutter with a continuous left-turn lane is a very.
How about sidewalks?
Yes, along with sidewalks, sir, yes, on both sides. This project is a very large, $25 million overall project that City of Mission has been able to secure $16.17 million from Hidalgo County MPO, federal funds. And the City of Mission is pretty much paying 20% of the cost of the right-of-way, and then in one section, 1% of the cost of construction. So federal and state funds in this section that you're about to approve the advanced funding agreement, City of Mission pays 1%, and federal and state funds pay 99% of the construction. The other section, which is from Business 83 to Expressway, the city pays 2.4%. So it's been a pretty, pretty good partnership between City of Mission, McAllen, and Hidalgo County. Overall, of this $25 million project, City of Mission's share is around 10% for project development, and McAllen is also 10%, and 8% for the county. So 28% of that is what is being participated. The project is from Expressway to Mall 3, I mean, from Expressway to Business 83 and Business 83 to Mall 2. You have already approved the first advanced funding agreement for the section from Expressway to Business, and what is before you is from the Business 83 North to Mall 2. What these agreements do, they formalize the reimbursement that the city will receive from the federal government and text dots. I won't go into any more details, but we'd be more than glad to answer any questions you all have.
Any questions?
More to approve.
We have a motion and a second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
4.18, authorization to enter into inter-local cooperation agreement between the City of Mission and the Lower Regent Development Council. Mr. Cardoza?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Item 4.18 is the purpose of this agreement is to memorialize the intent of the parties to obtain the most accurate 911 addresses from the city, so the LRGVDC, emergency communications 911, emergency service to the residents within the city limits, and to prepare for the future of next generation 911. Staff and City Manager recommend approval for this item. 4.18 is now before you.
Do I hear a motion? Hear a motion? Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve authorization to enter into an inter-local cooperation. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, sir.
Thank you.
4.19, Ms. Derma, approval of ordinance Number 4660. Am I correct? Ms. Carrillo? 4660. Of the City Council.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item Number 4.19 is the approval of ordinance of the City Council of the City of Mission, Texas, amending subsection B3 sanitary sewer rates, subsection C2 water rates, and subsection D affidavit of unoccupy of Section 114-54 rates and charges enumerated of Article II rates and charges of the Mission Code of Ordinances providing for severability and providing for an effective date. In order to finance the water and sewer system capital improvements, it is necessary to increase the water and sewer rates. Rates have not been increased since 2008. However, there have been many capital improvements which have been financed through revenue bonds. In addition, the City of Mission is required to have a bond ratio of 1.25 as per bond covenants. The ratio enables the city to obtain better credit ratings from rating agencies such as Moody's Investors and other insurance bonding companies. The new rates would be, will be in effect October 1 of 2018. Staff and City Manager recommend approval of ordinance.
More to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve ordinance 4660. Do I hear any further discussion? Final notes, discussion? No, no. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Mayor, may I publicly add, the water rate, the current water rate is 9.22 with an increase of $1.28 going to $10.50, and the sewer rate would be currently $7.95 with an addition of .80 for a total of $8.75. Our, every, every household dwelling would incur $2.08 a month increase for the water and sewer rates.
Thank you. You might also want to display it in our, in our website, you know, so people can be able to see the amount.
Yes, sir.
So.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. 4.20, approval of this ordinance 4661. Go ahead, Ms. Derma again.
Approval of ordinance 4661 of the City of, of the City Council of the City of Mission, Texas, amending Chapter 114, Article 5, Drainage Division 2 Drainage Improvement Fee, Section 114-171 of the Code of Ordinances Manual, extending the period of time in which a drainage assessment fee shall be collected for the City of Mission. The drainage assessment fee was established in 1982 to generate revenues that would be used for drainage improvements. The collection period for this fee needs to be extended so that more improvements can be made to the drainage system. Drainage assessment fee is to be extended until September 30 of 2020. Currently, the, the fee is $2.50 for residential and $4 for commercial. Staff and City Manager recommend approval of this ordinance.
Do I hear a motion?
More to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 4661. Any other discussion?
What will be the increase?
There is no increase. It's, it remains the same, $2.50.
We're just allowing the, extending the date because it, it was expired, am I correct?
Correct.
It was expired, so we need to extend it so we can continue collecting the assessment fees.
So the total, the total impact is just $2.08 between these two items?
That was only for the previous item, sir.
There's no impact on this one. Other than the extension.
Okay.
No new impact?
Correct.
Let me, let me correct myself. No new impact. And the drainage assessment fees stay the same. The only thing that we're doing is, is allowing the contract to extend so we can be able to continue assessing.
Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Tax 4.21, tax collection report, June 2018. Ms. Vela?
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Item 4.21 is a tax and collection report for June 2018. The total tax levy was $20,52,247.76, and the amount of collections as of June 30 is $19,199,715.70, which is 95.75% of the tax levy. Staff and City Manager recommend approval.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the tax collection report, June 2018. Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 4.22, acceptance of quarterly reports?
Item 422 is the acceptance of the quarterly report of investments for the quarter ending June 30, 2018. And I have a correction, it should be interest earned for nine months ending June 30, 2018 versus six months.
Correct and clip it.
Yes, okay. The increases are $2,978.60, and we had decreases of $7,275,000, which leaves outstanding investment balances of $16,63,336.44. And interest earned year-to-date is $181,472.69. Staff and City Manager recommend approval.
More to approve.
We have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
A second, further discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 4.23, approval of budget amendments?
Item 423 is approval of the attached budget amendment, which is in the Designated Purpose Fund, which is our grant fund. This is an amendment of $250,000 in revenues and expenses, which is an allocation for the 2017 Stone Garden Grant that will be used for overtime and the purchase of a Sky Watch Tower system for the police department. Staff and City Manager recommend approval.
More to approve.
We have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second, all those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Four point two-four.
Mayor, City Council, good afternoon. Item four point twenty-four is an agenda item regarding the presentation of the preliminary budget for fiscal year two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, and as per city charter, the city manager between sixty and ninety days prior to the beginning of each fiscal year shall submit to the city council a proposed budget in which the budget shall provide a complete financial plan for fiscal year. Presented today is a preliminary budget with my recommendations. If we look at the budget, it's exactly what we've been talking about at the workshops. We're looking to propose forty-six million twenty-three thousand two hundred and fifteen in the general fund, twenty-three million five hundred and sixty-nine thousand nine hundred and forty-eight in the utility fund, with a total of all funds' balance included being a hundred and seven million eight hundred and twenty thousand seven hundred and eighty-three dollars. This is keeping the same tax rate that we currently have, which is point forty-eight sixty-two, being the tax rate, and also including here is a proposed increase of a dollar to the employees, civilian employees, who are earning less than fifteen dollars, and also to some labor positions that we made a comparison with the neighboring cities to be compatible to those cities. That is the presented budget, it will be in our city secretary's office for the public.
I would recommend that we, the specialized, the specialized rates that we increased on those jobs, if you could put it on the website so people can see that, that part of the-
Absolutely, sir, and those positions are your park labors, your street labors, your pipe labors, your greenkeepers, your light equipment operators, heavy equipment operators, and the crew leaders, and we'll make a note on that on our website as well.
And the other thing is to note that our minimum wage is going from the City of Mission from eight dollars and fifty cents to nine dollars and fifty cents.
That's correct.
You know, as far as that is concerned, I would like that point to be made also.
That's correct.
You know. Do I hear a motion?
I'm going to approve.
Second?
Second.
Do, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion carries. Four point two-five, set the public hearing.
That's correct, Mayor. This is a public hearing, it's to set date for fiscal year two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen budget. City manager is requesting to set the public hearing on fiscal year two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen budget on Monday, August the thirteenth, two thousand eighteen, as required by city charter. Section nine point oh six, notice of public hearing on budget, at the meeting of the city council at which the budget is submitted, the city council shall fix the time and place of a public hearing on the budget and shall cause to be published in a newspaper of general circulation within the City of Mission, a notice of the hearing setting for the time and place thereof at least ten days before the date of such hearing. The public hearing is to give interested parties the opportunity to be heard. The public hearing date, time, and location will be published in the local newspaper, and again, the date is August the thirteenth, two thousand eighteen. We're asking approval of this, or I'm sorry, this is a, to set the public hearing.
There's no action, there's no action item on this, right?
There is an action item to, to set the-
Set the date?
-date of August the thirteenth, yes, sir.
I'm going to approve.
We have a motion and a second?
Second.
To approve the public hearing date? Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion carries. Is it possible to put the approved preliminary budget on our website so people can, can give us feedback? Because if you don't, if you don't see the budget, you know, I mean, I know, I know it's available at the city secretaries, but if we can upload it-
It'll be on our website, sir.
You know, so it's, and-
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gussa. Any, no unfinished business in this, I'll wait for it. Six point old routine matters, six point one, city manager's comment?
No comments, sir, just really, just a reminder of, to the council and to the public that we will have our next meeting of the city council at five-thirty P M. That was discussed, and we're ready to move forward with those dates, or with those times, I'm sorry, five-thirty.
Okay. I have three items to, to mention on the mayor's comment. Number one is that we would like to see if we could get ideas from the council on establishing what is called a consent agenda item on the, on the council agendas. If you could provide feedback to the city manager, which are the kind of items that you wanna put under consent agenda item, keeping in mind that at any time if a consent agenda item is placed, you can always draw it on the day of the, of the council, draw it up for discussion, you know, but there's some routine things that we can take care of, you know, since the last time that we had to do five resolutions, you know, at one time, you know, we can always put them as consent agenda item, but I want also at the end for Legal to review it and then give us the okay that, that everything is in, in order. Also, Friday, we wanna call a workshop at four P M.
This Friday?
This Friday at four P M. In reference to the instrument that we wanna use on the request of Ms. Ochoa and, and the instrument that we wanna use for the evaluation of the, evaluation and assessment of the, of the city. As far as that is, so we can, we can be able to indicate, we're gonna ask the individual that's gonna do the assessment to let us know how he's gonna handle it, what instrument he's gonna use, and what items they're gonna, they're gonna indicate as indicators for, for public to receive the surveys. We're gonna survey all, select the public, and we'll get those details-
This coming Friday.
This coming Friday from four to five. So, just make sure that we post and do those things.
That's correct.
You know, I do wanna make a final note, and that is that the minimum wage from the City of Mission is, went from eight, eight dollars and fifty cents to nine dollars and fifty cents. I know that in my one-hundred-day, not a promise, but my platform, was that we were looking at, at the aspect of fifteen dollars an hour for all, all employees, and I, don't lose faith, you know, we've got three more budgets to work with, and every budget we're gonna move up to minimum wage. Obviously, when I, when I came in and I was sworn in, ninety percent of the budget was already in place, and I had the option of, of going back to zero and costing all our city employees all the hard work that they had done and so forth, and all the planning that they had done for the previous year, and start from scratch, so I had to do what is best for the City of Mission instead of do, do what is best for myself, you know, so I had to, but I've already instructed the staff that we are working toward the goal in three more years to have fifteen dollars as a minimum wage in the City of Mission, so we can be competitive across the board. And that's one of the reasons why I asked Mr. Gussa to, to look at the, at the, at to post those jobs, actually, had a great discussion at the workshop, a lengthy discussion and a lengthy workshop also, preparing the budget as far as that is concerned, and some of those, some of those were, are gonna get closer to fifteen dollars, but I did give the instruction that as we move people up, they won't be moving down because, because the minimum wage is at nine-fifty now. When we hire new people, new persons, for them, the minimum wage has moved up to eleven-fifty or whatever the amount is, as far as that for the rest of the next four years, as far as that is concerned. Again, you know, I do wanna make a public announcement on this and, and be able to tell the public that we are here to serve eighty-eight thousand people or more, you know, and not to serve ourselves, so, you know, I had to give up my, my deal for the best interests of all the citizens of Mission and, and to be able to come up with a, a nice budget that's gonna be a workable budget for the next, next fiscal year. Without, enough said from my part, I'm gonna open it from the city council comments, and I'll start from the place three, since place four is, is not here at this time, so, place three?
I just wanna encourage anyone that was affected by the floods in June to go by the, the FEMA office located in, at our-
One fifteen South Mayberry.
One fifteen South Mayberry, which is our social-
Social center by the-
Social center by the, by the food pantry, yes. I did talk to someone that had visited the, the location today, and they said that the people were kinda not turning out, and so that concerns me because at our, at the beginning of our meeting, we had over a hundred and seventy-five homes that had not even been assessed yet, so there's gotta be people out that have been, that have been affected. Maybe they don't know about it, so if you guys could help in, in disseminating the, the information, that would be great, 'cause we need to get people out there that need the help.
No comments.
No comments, Ms. Ochoa?
Yes, I would just like to commend our health department and our advisory board for the Mission Possible. I attended an event last Saturday, which was a wellness clinic in partnership with R G V Low Cost Bay and Neuter, and it was just beautiful seeing all our community members there with their animals to get vaccinations, and they also put the chips, the chips and all of that. Unfortunately, because it was hot, because we had the, the organization that's helping with our families are staying at the Parks and Rec, so the event was held outside, and it was really hot. So, we had to turn people away at around an hour after we got it started, 'cause the line was so long. But we hope that through our mayor and council and city manager, we offer these on a monthly basis. That was a lot of the feedback that I was getting from the residents that were there, and they loved the idea, and it was just a beautiful sight. So, there's, I just wanna inform the public and the community members that are here right now, it's a beautiful day in Mission, and things are just gonna get greater. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. We do have a seven-point-zero executive session. We have two items, could I entertain a motion to go into executive session?
I'm going to.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go into executive session pertaining to B T C A Government Code, section five-five-one point zero-zero-one. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion carries, we will go into executive sessions.
I'm going to reconvene.
We have a motion to reconvene, do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second, and this is an opening for discussion, if anybody wants to discuss the motion, if not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. We are back in session.
Mayor, let the record show that Gus Martinez is-
For the record, Mr. Guss Martinez came in and-
Mr. Martinez arrived, according to my notes here, Mayor, was at nine-ten P M.
Thank you, thank you for the documentation. I'm calling seven-point-one-A. Seven-point-one-A, one.
Mayor, if the council wishes to take action on seven-point-one-A, one, that's the deliberation in action regarding the appointment evaluation duties and other employment matters relating to the following municipal court judicial appointment, that being one presiding Judge Jonathan Warmeister. Having conferred an executive session regarding this matter as permitted by state law, the city council desires to take action as to item seven-point-one-A, one, presiding Judge Jonathan Warmeister, and make a motion with the following findings, whereas the City of Mission is a home rule city granted authority by state law, section twenty-nine point zero-zero-four and city charter, section four point zero-five, to appoint a municipal court judge, and whereas the city charter provides that a municipal judge shall hold his office at the pleasure of the city council, and whereas establishing measures to ensure satisfactory performance of an appointed municipal judge is an implied power granted to the city council. Therefore, the, the council finds that the reinstatement of Jonathan Warmeister to full duties as full-time presiding judge is permissible and ordered, and as a condition of continued appointment, all other administrative guidelines as discussed in executive session shall be complied with.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I'm going to approve.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, a motion carries. Seven-point-one-A, two, three, and four, or just two?
As to item seven-point-one-A, two, three, and four, alternate Judge Horacio Peña, alternate Judge Mauro Reyna, and alternate Judge Ramon Rosales, no action is necessary at this time.
You don't need a, well, no action, no motion. Okay, seven-point-two-A?
As to seven-point-two-A, this is deliberations about real property, consideration of release of lien for property located on lots six, seven, and eight Glasscock Acres. We would need a motion to approve resolution number fifteen sixty-six, and this resolution would state that the council, having considered the circumstances of the demolition and, and all other extenuating circumstances which exist as to the, as to said liens, those liens being two-four, two-two, two-eight-five, two-four-six, three-one-zero-seven, two-four-eight, five-two-two-one, two-five-six, two-one-nine-two, two-six-three, five-one-eight-two, two-six-seven, seven-zero-five-seven, two-six-nine, zero-seven-eight-zero, two-seven-four, four-two-seventy-six, two-seven-eight-three, one-two-three, two-eight-three, nine-three-four-seven, and the cost of the demolition of the structure that occurred on March twenty-second, two thousand eighteen. The council authorizes any other administrative tasks necessary to accomplish the waiver of said liens in, in consideration for the payment of six thousand nine hundred and thirty-one dollars.
I need a motion to approve resolution fifteen sixty-six as stated by attorney.
More to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, a motion carries. I need, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm going to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion, second, undebatable motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion carries, we adjourn.